Gurnee Village Board, regular meeting of June 20th, 2016, to order. Roll call, please. Andy?
Garner.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Ballmas.
Present.
Hood.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Six present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. First up is always public comment. If anybody would like to come and address the board on something that's not on the agenda. If not, you'll have another opportunity at the end. Although, I would ask David for him to come to the microphone. I had my coffee over the weekend, and people always bring up things that concern them. I was trying to explain the Route 132 bank stabilization thing, but people don't understand why we tore out the trees in order to complete that. So I thought maybe just for on the record, you can explain why we needed to pull the trees out.
Oh, I'll take it.
I want the plain language explanation.
Ouch.
Oh, ouch.
So basically, the tributary to the Des Plaines River runs along the south side of Grand Avenue between McClure and Grand Avenue. Over the years, that area has grown up in trees and woody material. As the trees mature and grow, they shade the banks of that tributary. When the banks shade, the grasses and the deep-rooted weeds and different material don't grow in those, in the shaded areas, which results in erosion. What we've noticed over the last couple of years is some of the, the bank against 132 is starting to erode. We shut down the sidewalk last year due to some undermining of the sidewalk in an effort to get that area to restabilize. We did go ahead and have the trees removed so that the banks will start to reseed and regrow and stabilize so that we don't have any further erosion.
All right. I, thank you very much. I could explain the bank stabilization. I couldn't explain the tree part, but that's good. So now we're on the record. If we get any further inquiries, thank you. All right, then I'm going to move on to approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please. Andy?
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item number one, approval of the minutes from the executive closed session meetings on June 1st, 2015, October 5th, 2015, November 2nd, 2015, March 21st, 2015, and April 4th, 2016. Item number two, approval for public release of minutes from executive closed session meetings on June 1st, 2015, October 5th, 2015, November 2nd, 2015, March 21st, 2015, and April 4th, 2016. Item number three, approval of dis, approval to dispose of electronic recordings from approved or released executive closed session meetings prior to December 2014. Item number four, approval of minutes from the June 6th, 2016 Village Board meeting. Item number five, approval of granting a Class 9 liquor license and waiving the fee for the Gurney Breakfast Exchange Club for their Gurney Days events on August 12th and 13th, 2016. Item number six, approval of setting a bid date of July 1st, 2016 for 2016 network equipment and maintenance project. Item number seven, approval payroll for period ending June 11th, 2016 in the amount of $775,557.39. Item number eight, approval payroll transfer journal for period ending June 11th, 2016 in the amount of $768,336.23. Item number nine, approval of bills for the period ending June 20th, 2016 in the amount of $1,910,184.83.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written to the record? Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, we're going to move on to petitions and communications. The first is a proclamation designating July as Relay for Life Month. I'll read the proclamation into the record. And then we do have our chairman, Kelly Stanberry, with us tonight. So maybe when I'm done, you can let us know some of the new things that are going on this year. So Relay for Life Month, July 2016. "The American Cancer Society is the nationwide, community-based, voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by providing, preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's nationwide signature activity and a celebration of life where we celebrate, remember, and fight back. And Relay for Life is a community event that celebrates survivors, remembers those who have lost their battle with cancer, and unites our community to fight against a disease that has taken too much from too many. And because cancer never sleeps, Relay for Life team members walk around a track relay style late into the night to raise financial support and awareness. And the 14th Annual Relay for Life of Gurnee Wadsworth will be held on July 9th at the Warren Township High School Almond Campus Track from 4:00 PM to midnight. Now therefore, I, Christina Kavark, Mayor of the Village of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Relay for Life Month in the Village of Gurnee and call upon all Gurnee residents to recognize the outstanding contributions and support provided by the American Cancer Society to all who have been touched by cancer." Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Kelly, you want to give us some highlights of this year's event? Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you for having me back. So, yes, July 9th will be our 14th Annual Relay for Life event. And this year, we're having a special celebration. In the 14 years since Relay for Life began, we have raised $2 million in the Gurnee Wadsworth area. And I wanted to just highlight a couple of things that that $2 million has done for cancer patients and their families. That $2 million equates to 5,714 Look Good Feel Better sessions, which teaches cancer patients how not only to put on makeup to feel more like themselves, but to care for their skins for the effects from chemotherapy, and wear headpieces and wigs. That $2 million equates to 20,000 wigs that were provided free of charge from the American Cancer Society to cancer patients that have lost their hair from chemotherapy treatments. And that $2 million equates to 200,000 Petri dishes that scientists can use to, in their research, for lifesaving cures for cancer. This year, we are recognizing, honoring, and celebrating the life of Julie Smith, who is a D-56 teacher. She and her family will be honored as our honorary survivor and caregiver. And as the mayor said, we are changing our hours this year, a little bit different, something new that we're trying. We're not going to walk overnight. We're going to start at 4:00, have our Survivor Dinner at 5:00. So we invite any survivors in the community of Gurnee to come for a free dinner and a celebration. And then we will wrap things up at midnight this year. We're looking forward to a celebration. Our relay is being showcased by the American Cancer Society. We were number seven in the state out of 200 relays last year. And they've chosen the Gurnee relay in this, in Lake County to showcase to other American Cancer Society volunteers and other folks involved with cancer research to come and take a look at what a, what a great community event this is. So we invite you all to come and join us as well. Thank you.
I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. And the village will be promoting it through all of their mediums that we have, and we'll get more information out as it gets closer. Next, we have a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month in the Village of Gurnee. Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Village of Gurnee. And the award-winning Gurnee Park District provides parks, recreation facilities, and programs for residents of all ages through municipal facilities, 400 acres of open space, and over 24 playgrounds, to name a few. And our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quali, improve the quality of light, of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And the Village of Gurnee recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Christina Kavark, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim July as National Parks and Recreation Month in the Village of Gurnee and encourage residents to take advantage of all the wonder, wonderful activities and amenities offered by the Gurnee Park District. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Ross. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. It's going to be Parks and Recreation Month in July. All right, we're going to move on to reports, which we have any, right?
Correct.
All right. But our committee, the whole meeting, is going to be on the strategic plan update, so it's in your packet now. But remember to bring it with you that Monday for the committee of the whole.
Yep, next Monday.
Next Monday. All right. Any old business?
No.
All right. And we're going to move on to new business. First item is approval of ordinance 2016.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, accepting the final plat of Stonebridge of Gurnee LLC.
Sure. So the next two items are related. You'll remember, Stonebridge of Gurnee is located on the north side of Washington Street between Tri-State and Hunt Club. About a 85,000 square foot building, 120 units per living facility. This was before you, late last year. So first, we have the, the final plat. Village engineer Scott Derbiki took a look at it, meets, conforms with our subdivision ordinance, planning and zoning board. It was before them on June 1st, and they're forwarding a favorable, unanimous recommendation. So it's ready for your consideration.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Hood. Oh.
I have a question.
Let me guess. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by, second by trustee Ballmas. All right, discussion?
Is this just for the?
This is just for the final plat.
Just the plat.
Never mind.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Andy?
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number two, approval of ordinance 201643, granting the final PUD plan pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance for 5980 Washington Street, formerly 16256-16346 West Washington Street. Patrick?
Sure. So as the mayor said, this is the final PUD plan. Per zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator takes a look at this, makes a determination whether it's in substantial conformance with the preliminary PUD. So just a couple of highlights on this. I mean, David did take a look at it, determined it wasn't substantial conformance when he looked at the entire overall plan. But there have been some changes to the exterior of the building. So in your packet, you have two sets of drawings. The darker set is what was before you, before. It's dated 9/12. And then you have a set that has a little lighter the print. That's what they're proposing now. So there have been some changes since September last year related to the exterior. So I'll read those off quick. Flatten the roof pitch, remove the brick from the first floor and replace it with hardy board, remove all the shutters, remove all the chimneys from the east and west elevations, place the arch window above the front entrance and with replace, and replace the square windows. Facial sizes reduced, the lintels over the windows were removed or reduced substantially. And then the entrance canopies are less ornate than before. So those are some changes to the external. Like I said, the zoning administrator looks at this as a plan as a whole. So it looks at the engineering, lighting, landscaping, including the architectural. And David has determined that it is in substantial conformance with what, with what was submitted through the preliminary PUD plan. So it's now ready for your consideration.
Are you representing the petitioner, sir? Oh, okay. All right. We may need you. Trustee Ross, you have a question?
Well, I don't know if it's a question as much as it's, I'm not happy with the changes. And I know that it's conforms, but you came here and showed us a very classy building. You were going to do something nice for a supported living facility for disabled individuals. And now it doesn't look as classy. And it looks like just, just a regular building, that you've taken away the brick and the shutters from the windows and the entrance canopies. And I don't understand why there's such a difference in price in one year.
All right. State your name for the record, please.
I'm Joe Munyany. I'm with Moon Development. And myself and the Burton Foundation, non-for-profit, are putting together the facility. What we've done, and when we presented the, the package in 2015, there were budgets, there were the estimates in regards to construction was based on those types of pricing that we were, that was available to us in 2015. Since that time, we've had to go to prevailing wage. We have different types of, we have different pay scale and labor scale to be able to do the building. Our budget is such, and to assure that all the, all the residents will be taken care of, we have a huge, huge reserve for all the rentals and all the expenses for the facility. When we went to do the budget again and the increases that we anticipate, that we received based on the new, new rates for labor, the difference was over $2 million. At that point, well, going from regular labor to prevailing wage, and that was, that was an ordinance that was changed by IDA, that any state program, any state-funded program would have to use union labor and prevailing wage. That impacted the cost of the, of our project. Doing that, we've maintained the front of the building and maintained the presence from the street as closely as we can in presenting to what we've done. We haven't changed any interior or any facilities or any, any amenities for the residents in the building. However, in the rear of the building, where we thought we would have some flexibility in regards to putting back, putting the pack, putting the building together and maintaining the budget that we have in place, those were the changes that we've done. In addition to that, I remember that there was some concern that, that somebody thought, some resident thought it was too high. We lowered the roof, and that was a cost savings for us. And it also lowered the, the height of the building to compensate for the concerns that they had then. The budget's the budget. We've had those changes. We thought it would be best not to change the amenities of the building and all the necessary items in the building, but the exterior of the building had to change somewhat.
More than somewhat.
Well, again, it was always, it, we've maintained the, we've maintained the front of the building as best we can with the stone. And we've done that. The back of the building was a concern. We felt as though that that was not being viewed from the road. And we felt as though that those were the changes that could be made for the building.
All right. Questions from other trustees? Trustee Thorstensen?
Just as, to refresh my memory. So the front entrance of the building is facing Washington Street?
Yes.
So it's quite visible, the changes that you, that you've made.
Yeah. And reviewing those with, with the planning and zoning board, they felt it was in close enough compliance. And then we went ahead and made those revisions to be able to maintain the construction budget and be able to put, put the building together.
Is there a separate company that's building this as opposed to who's managing the building?
Don, for the record, let me recognize you. So we, so the minutes, when they listen to them, they know who's talking. Question, trustee Wilson?
Mr. Wilson, we have a general contractor that's putting the building together. However, the property manager is Blair Mitten. And Blair Mitten will be responsible for the property management and all the medical assistance that all the residents are going to be, that they require. So Blair Mitten and his organization, he's, he's done, he has, he's managed 27 supportive living facilities. We feel very, very comfortable with the property manager. It's not the general contractor that's putting together the project. He's, he's not responsible for the general contractor. However, he's been, he's been involved in the design of the building, putting to, making sure that all the amenities are in place, and all the features that we put in the building are maintained for our residents.
The reason I ask that question is because of, trustee Ross is concerned, as far as you mentioned this budget, how would it take just a little bit longer to make up that budget amount, to make sure that in a?
Our budget is predicated, our budget is predicated on the construction budget and the IDA contribution for the low, the low-income tax credits. And those, those are being etched in stone right now. Those are etched in stone, and we can't move from that. And plus the, plus the reserves that we've put in place, all adds up to the, all adds up to the budget that we've got in place.
One of the concerns that we have is that this is somewhat of a gateway in Gurnee. And right down the road, we're asking people to come to our village and spend money at some of our great facilities that we have. That's the source of our concern, at least mine and some of the other trustees that have spoken up about it.
I understand. Again, we've tried, we've, we've, it was our intention to, if there's revisions to be made, there would be revisions to be made that would less impact the visual of the building than the front of the building. And we've worked with Dave and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission about some options that we were putting in place and tried to add some additional stone to the building. Those aren't the exact colors. And the border in the middle is going to be stone. It's not going to be, it's not going to be the board or anything like that.
We're certainly concerned. I'm certainly concerned with your building, but also with the aesthetics of our village. So, thank you.
Understood. Totally understand. And I certainly respect that. And no one wanted to make the changes, but the budget just blew up on us because of the, because of the.
Prevailing wage?
The prevailing, thank you, prevailing wage, Mr. Wilson. Thank you.
Yeah, when, anytime you're using state funds, which are ultimately taxpayer funds, prevailing wage comes into play. Yeah. The village has followed it for 50 years. So, all right. Any questions over here? Trustee Ballmas?
I just want to, it looks like it, but I just want to verify that some of the outdoor amenities do remain, like the gazebo and the concrete for the residents, so they can go outside.
It's just as important for the residents to have an outdoor, outdoor amenities as it is. We have the pathway. And in fact, there was a conversation about the lanes for the fire department. We maintained those. We maintained everything that was recommended on the exterior. We did, we did make some revisions on the building itself. But the amenities are remaining.
Thank you.
David, you were, again, wonderful with your explanation when we met about the changes here, explaining hardy board versus brick. You want, just maybe, because I, hardy board, I think of like drywall or something. In the way you explained it, it's not what it is at all.
So the, the hardy board is a cement-based product. So it is much more weatherable than, than a vinyl or an aluminum siding. When they proposed the changes, you know, I asked to see color samples. I asked to see, you know, texture samples, to see what they could do with it to as closely mimic the look of the brick versus the, the hardy board, which was the original, the, the top elevation. So they came back and they put together the sample board for me. Since that time, they did switch out the vinyl trim that was separating the two with more of a, it's a manufactured concrete product that will act as a drip edge between, act as a drip edge in between the two hardy board surfaces. So while it isn't as rich a texture as what brick is, or as, it is still a, a commercial-grade exterior finish that does have, you know, it does have some ability with changes in texture and changes in color to give a little bit of a breakup to the building, facades.
So it's not like, it says hardy board, but it's not like ship漆 or something? It's, it is a way of mimicking brick at a reduced cost. And you've seen from our own projects here, we're getting hit really bad on the cost of cement and some other things. So there has been a big difference, even for the village on their projects, from what we estimated last year to what it's actually turning out this year. So that is realistic. It is a very much-needed type of housing in this area. And I think from the street, whether you'd know it was brick or hardy board, we will know because we voted on it. But driving by on Washington, I don't know that it's that noticeable. And I guess you could always add shutters later in the future.
That is, that is something that can be added in the future. But right now, the budget doesn't call for it to be able to get the construction in the future. If that's something that we can add, I'd be thrilled to be able to do that as well.
Hi, Mayor.
Trustee Garner?
I'm, I'm familiar with hardy board. And, and a, on a house is one thing. But on a structure this size is a whole nother element. I think a building this size with hardy board on it would look very inexpensive. And the problem with it is, once you build it, it's there forever. And I, I think, you know, and this is for our board, you know, we've got enough inexpensive construction in our town. And, you know, the, you know, it's, it's very difficult to improve. And I, and I understand budgets and costs and all of that thing. But I also understand we're trying to build a town that looks like something, especially being a tourist town where millions of people come to see. You want them to come and have a great experience and not look at it like, you know, you're in, in some low-class neighborhood. And I think that, you know, approving projects where, you know, we're, they're not doing their best so that we reflect our best, I think is, is, is something that's very important for us to consider when we approve these types of things. Again, it's, you know, hardy board looks great on a house. But this thing is three stories. It's huge. And I don't think we'll like it once it goes up. And I know what that means, or how that sounds to you, but it's just the reality of it. So that's what I had to say. I don't like the project.
You don't like the exterior?
I don't like the aesthetics of the project.
The project is to help physically disabled adults have a better alternative to a nursing home.
I understand what it's for. But I think it's, I think it's a poor fit aesthetically.
And I-
Based on the materials that are being used and all of the, all the things that, I mean, basically what has happened here, they've, they've gutted all of the aesthetics in the project and gave us bare bones, externally. So-
And the, I will point out-
And I think that just needs to be said.
Yeah. Only the first floor was brick. So the hardy board was still going to be on floors two through four with the original proposal. It's only the first floor, which was the, the brick course, has been changed. So it was originally approved with hardy board on the upper floors.
I understand.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Trustee Ballmas?
Two different color hardy board looks like you're faking brick. And, and which is exactly what you're doing.
But I just want to verify, it's a commercial-grade-
Yes.
-party. So I mean, it's a better quality.
We don't see it on residential applications too often. A lot of times, just as accent pieces. I'm not that familiar with the product to know if there's a residential-grade hardy board and a commercial-grade hardy board. I know that it is used in commercial applications.
So I mean, it's going to hold up?
It, it's a much better product than vinyl or aluminum siding.
Okay.
That you typically see on the residential products.
All right, trustee Thorstensen? Do we have an estimated life on the product?
Joe, do you know what the estimated life was?
I don't know the estimated life of the product, the, the hardy board. I can tell you the estimated life of the project. But I apologize. I just don't have that technical information in front of me. I can get that for you and certainly give it to Dave to pass on.
My estimate would be between 30 and 50 years, based upon the cement board consistency.
They wouldn't get construction financing unless the exterior would last longer than the loan. Trustee Ross?
I guess the, the problem that I'm having with it is, I feel like we were deceived by the first drawing and then coming back with the second drawing that doesn't look like that. And that's my problem that I have to deal with.
Ms. Ross, I totally, I, I understand. I, I do understand. And getting, getting hammered with, literally hammered with that kind of an increase in prevailing wage resulted in some of the changes that we've had to put in place. I can make, if, if things, I don't want to say if things change. If things change, I think I'd like to very much to reinvest in being able to put that together. But I don't know what that's going to be. I don't want to come here and promise, oh, we'll put brick here and brick there. I can't promise you that. A lot of, a lot of work has gone into the plans. As Scott can tell you, he's looked them over several times, and David and Tracy. But if there's an opportunity to re, to add some of the, some of the things, some of the elements that were required to be taken out, I'll commit to being able to put that in. What those are, I don't know. Just the, some, one change could be $150,000. It's, it's, it's expensive. I don't have much- much of an answer for you, and I feel, I feel, I feel badly that I can't give you a good answer.
No, I know, and, and the board is familiar, you know, going for the tax credits, because this is a disadvantaged population in need of housing, that's an extremely long process too, which there's no way to lock in construction costs that far in advance. I don't believe that they intended to deceive us, I just, it very well that no one could recognize how much time it would take to get through this process, and the state money obviously does require a different wage scale. Trustee Wilson?
Yep. Certainly, our concern is about the construction, how it'll, how it'll look when it's, you know, on the way to one of our amusement parks, it's on the way to our, our mall, and I think that you can stand against, or you can be in opposition to the current aesthetics of the property without being against the, the goal of the property, to speak to, you know, trustee Garner. So I just want to make that point, and that separation.
All right.
Thank you.
How can I not understand? I do understand.
All right, trustee Hood?
So what's your timeframe as far as if we don't approve it tonight, then what's your limitations on being able to do the project?
Not approving it tonight causes the general contractor to have to move into winter, winter building conditions, and that's going to add additional cost to the project. That's one concern that we have, we've, in fact, we've been talking with David to, can, when can we start to go on and start working on leveling the ground, the demolition of the, the existing building and the existing shacks on the property? Any other further delays of being able to get our PUD and getting the approval and the building permits will just add cost to it, because right now, contractors gotten subcontractors that have committed to their times, and now if we have to delay another month, that brings them into their summer season or for the fall season, and that might, that would incur winter conditions for the building.
So if there's going to be some other issues that, it would appear there's some issues over aesthetics, is there, are there some things, as you stand here tonight, that you'd be able to do that would be a low-cost improvement that you might consider that would assist us in approving your project?
Mr. Hood, if there, if there's a way of knowing that there's additional funds to be able to put into the aesthetics of the building, I'll commit to that, we will, we will do that. However, the general contractor has put his pencil to paper to be able to come up with a budget, all the budgets that we've put in place for IDA and the, the investors and, and for the loans and everything like that have all been pretty much iced, but if there's any funds to be able to reinvest and be able, able to work on the aesthetics, I will commit to that. I just don't know what that number is, I don't want to tell you we'll pour another 150,000 because it's razor-thin right now.
So it would be helpful to me is that if you attempted that on a very short timeframe, and then came back, and even if you said to us that this is the very, very best we can do, I think that would be different than, maybe it's there, maybe it's not, but I understand you're under a time constraint, but based on what I'm hearing from the other trustees, I'd hate to hear a no, as opposed to, let, let's see what we can do and then come back on a short timeframe. So, not that I'm the person to make that choice by myself, but are you willing to do that?
If we find that there's, I, I'm not so sure I understand your question.
If you would be able to come back and say, we've investigated, being able to improve the aesthetics, and we can fit that into our budget, and you'd propose whatever those improvements are, or you'd come back and say, I have investigated this and I cannot do any more improvements, we're, we're out.
I will, Mr. Hood, I will commit, I'll commit to that.
But I'm not, I'm not the one making that choice, I'm just saying it'd be helpful for us, and then that would be for the board to decide, I just would hate to hear a no tonight, where I think it's an excellent project and it's something that Gurnee needs, and if it's an issue over aesthetics, it seems like something we can certainly get over somehow with you.
Again, I, I can't commit to how much, if there is something that, if I were to come back and I said, there's just no way, there's just no way, maybe there's future things, once we're established, once we've reached our, our, the residency, and we're, we have something that we can do in a year or two or something like that, I would like, I would like to be able to say that we can, we can stone the corners, or we can stone some other walls that would be able to provide that, add to the front, but I, I just don't want to commit to something like that then disappoint.
What trustee Hood, I think, is suggesting is that we postpone the vote on this project, which would it postpone it to the second week of July, because we have, so, it'd be a month, about...
Your Honor...
Three weeks. Because what the trustees are, what trustee Hood and Garner and Wilson might be suggesting is that it would be a no vote, and if we vote down your final PUD, the project is done, over with, off the table for forever, or at least for a year.
Closing for the construction loan is the beginning, is the end of month.
If we, if we deny something, we can't vote on it again for a year, right?
I believe they can, since the preliminary PUD's been approved, I believe they can come back immediately with a new version of a final PUD.
Right, right, yeah. I, I think it might be helpful to clarify, though, up to this point, you've made the statement that this isn't the cheapened version, you're, you're utilizing the full budgeted amount that you had or you anticipated to have when you first proposed this, correct?
Yes.
So that you're not saying that we're gonna spend less on this building...
I'm not taking dollars out, I'm not taking dollars out.
You're, you're continuing to be committed to that, that sum of money that initially prompted you to make the drawing the way it was initially presented, correct?
Yes.
And so...
The money, the money was, it's $28 million.
Okay, so, so, I mean, I think the, the trustees are saying, we don't want to find out that you only spent $26 million, and, but it, it doesn't have all the refinements that, that you initially proposed. You're committed to spending the full $27 million, correct?
Right, now, the $27 million includes the reserves that we've put in place, that's the total budget.
Okay.
We're committed to put, we, if, I, I don't have the exact figure for the, the construction budget, but we're committed to spend every dollar of it.
So the 1 million is your 10% contingency on your construction loan? When you say reserves, it's not, it's not bank reserves, it's your contingency for the construction, right?
No, it's reserves that IDA requires to be able to put in place, because first of all, and the, and the bank is, is asking for the reserves for ramp-up in, in regards to rental, have, there's a requirement to have reserves for X amount of months of operating.
Okay, all right, but it's not a construction...
There's a significant reserves, but those are financial, the construction budget is unto itself.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and that, that number hasn't changed?
No, in fact, it's gone up.
And then, it might be helpful too, David, I know we have other institutional structures, how does this compare to some of the, the existing buildings?
As far as architectural or size?
Architectural, you know, these, these changes.
How about the buildings right next to it in the industrial park? The first one there is...
The Dr. Damagala's medical office?
Or, or some of the bigger institutional...
Or the bigger ones.
The bigger ones are all tilt-up concrete panel that are just painted.
Right.
For the, the center point.
Because we purposely pushed them towards the industrial park versus some other places that they could have gone. So, I mean, just architecturally, is this similar material?
It's different because it's a different use, it's hard to, we're not comparing apples to apples, you know, the industrial buildings look like industrial buildings, the office buildings look like office buildings, this looks like a institutional residential building.
How about the other four-story on, on the east side, St., what is it, St. Franch?
Heritage Woods.
Yeah, Heritage or St. France, is it St. Francis or St. Assisi's?
Assisi. I believe Assisi is a brick structure, Heritage Woods, I believe, was a, I don't believe they had brick on it, I think it was a hardy board structure. They may to be, had some stone accents, but I don't recall for 100% for certain.
What's Thomas Place?
Thomas Place is a brick and hardy board structure.
So institution, I mean, we're com...
And...
Other institutional buildings that were subject to tax credits and stuff, or similar uses.
And Joe, it may be helpful if you talk a little bit about the Burton Foundation and their involvement in the, the funding of it as well, that it's a not-for-profit that's working on doing this development, and that it's not a, a for-profit venture.
No, it's, I'm, I'm partners with the Burton Foundation, it was my responsibility, I got the, I received the license putting the plan together, going to the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services, they awarded me the license. Originally, the license was for Hawthorne Woods, however, due to sewer issues, we had to move, move our site, Dave was instrumental in finding us one site, we worked for a year working on Hunt Club, the owner of the property decided not to sell the property, so we've, Dave's, again, Dave suggested the site that we're currently on, and it's a much better site than the site that we were working on at Hunt Club near the community center and the, and the, and the park district. Working with the Burton Foundation, they, they specialize in putting together affordable housing, having that kind of expertise in developing that, in fact, they're partners in the Thomas Place, right on Hunt Club Road. It was a good fit to be able to put that together and be, and have the Burton Foundation assist in putting together the Stone Ridge of Gurnee. They've gotten, there's a lot of experience, they have, I don't know the exact number, they have about 14 or 15 different locations that they've put together for the, for affordable living in the Midwest area. So I thought, you know, that was a good fit, and with their experience and my license, it seemed to be a good fit to be able to put that together. Non-for-profit, they're, in fact, any developer fees or anything have been reinvested in the project to be able to make the budget work a little bit better, this is all being done for not, and putting together the project, so that's, that's what we've done. I know I'm not answering your questions, and I apologize about that, I wish I could tell you that we can make those changes that we've done, but we've had the, we've had the building, and then little by little, what if we do this, what if we do that, just to get down to the budget number for the construction? And we're there, and we've upped it, we've, we've reinvested dollars from the finance and the, and the reserve side to be able to get to the budget as best we can, and that's where the budget is. Right now, it's about 14 or, 14, 14.3 in the, for the plan for the construction. Again, I, my commitment to you is if there's monies that are available, that we can make some of the changes on the job, to be able to enhance the appearance of the building, especially the front, I think that's probably most important in my mind, the rear of the building is facing woods and, and things like that, I, hopefully, we, we can make that investment, the shutters, we would make that investment. What those investments are, I don't want to promise you something and then disappoint, that's, that would not be right. And I certainly understand you feel like you've been duped, and we haven't done that. I can assure you, we haven't done that.
All right, so you're, you're spending the same amount of money as originally proposed, cost overruns and, and budget increases.
Yes, contingencies are all there.
So you eliminated brick, so you eliminated brick on the first floor, the shutters and the shape of the windows. If we postpone this for a month, are there things on the inside that you could, because obviously you made a trade-off, you didn't make changes on the inside, you made them on the outside, the board obviously wants brick on the first floor, I would think they might compromise on brick on just the front on the first floor, are there things, if we give you a month, that you could cut out of the services on the inside to pay for the brick on the outside, on the, would everybody be happy with the front of the building?
Your Honor, I can't, I can't tell you how much that would be.
I know, well, that's what I'm saying, if I give you a month...
And we're closing, we're closing, the intent was to close on, at the end of this month. I'm not so sure.
We don't have another board meeting until the second week of July, unless we turn next week's meet, would, could you do it in a week, if we turn next week's meeting into a, an official meeting?
You know, not knowing what services are recalling, you know, the quality of your services inside, I'm hesitant that they'd take away what the resident...
Well, but it's better than losing the whole project over brick on the first floor.
I, well, I'm just, is there another option that we would approve it subject to them coming back at a very, at an interval to give us...
Yeah, but it's not gonna make more money for the project to put brick on the first floor, they already had hardy board on the other floors, so we're talking about brick on the first floor, I'm offering to say, only put it on the front, instead of all the way around the building, what that would cost, they'd have to take it from the inside, because they, they only have an X amount of dollars in budget.
That, that's correct, and remember, these are physically disabled people.
I know.
The flooring has to be such, the...
Trustee Ross?
Well, since I'm the one that started this, I would hate to see you do something to the inside, because that's where they're gonna spend the majority of their time.
It's their home, it's their, it's their home.
Yes, and the aesthetics are, are a problem.
Yes.
And so, I think...
I don't want to risk a no vote and the whole, we lose the whole project. Trustee Garner?
I think if you, if you shrank the footprint of the building maybe six inches or so, that would, the, the savings in the, in, in that amount of materials needed would make the difference for you.
That's all right, we've already done that, we looked at the foundation, what's, what can we do with the foundation, what can this foundation support, we've taken that into consideration, and that's, we've, we've done that. With the plumber, it's the piping, make sure that we maintain the quality of the piping and the plumbing, but have we got the correct price, that we, did we get the, did we get the correct price? Reducing the footprint at this late stage would require all new plans and, quite honestly, I'm reluctant.
All new review by the bank.
Not only that, the investor, the investment, the investment community, IDA would have to re-review all of that, it would be another, this took two years to get together, I, I don't want to come back in two years, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to make light of it, but it's, it's a difficult situation.
I'm gonna put you on the spot, or even use, brick on the front of the building, just rough estimate, one-floor brick just across the front?
In speaking with the developer, the change in cost from hardy board to brick for the entire first floor was a half-million-dollar change. That was, that was for the entire, for just the front facade, I'm guessing probably half of that, because you still have to mobilize the brick layers, you still have to organize them, so it's probably a quarter-million-dollar change.
Trustee Wilson?
I believe that we, as a board, and certainly the mayor, has offered up some guidance as far as, can we just move it one week, and we haven't even gotten that from you. Could you give us a week, sir?
Well, he, he doesn't get a week, because that's a separate vote, right now, it goes out to July 11th, I mean, that would be a separate vote we would take, I'm just asking if that's even feasible before we take that vote.
That's one step of guidance that's been offered.
But, again, we are talking about $250,000, which is kind of a rough estimate from David, so throwing that number out, do you have $250,000 on the inside of that building that you can cut to get brick on the outside?
Your Honor, no.
Okay.
I, I can't, I can't jeopardize the, the residents. Do I go back to look to the contractor and see what he can do, do we put in quarter-inch drywall instead of something else, do we put one nail in instead of two, I, I'm, I'm reluctant to do that. I'm pleased, I'm not trying to be hard-nosed about it, but it's a concern of mine.
All right, so it doesn't sound like a week is really gonna, like magically make $250,000.
Well, one adjustment has to filter down to, it's, it's like the champagne glass, it has to filter down to everybody that's involved in the project. I would have to wait another month for the IDA board to approve the difference, I would have to go through all of those types of changes, and, and I don't know how much that would, that would, how much more that would provide us to be able to do that, if it would provide us anything at all.
And I may add, you know, I've been asking for those same types of low-cost, higher-impact visual changes, and, you know, we got the, the drip edge, you know, in between, you know, they've, they've had a few concessions coming back, they had a, their laundry list of changes was much longer originally, and I ex nade a few of them, knowing that they would not fly in front of this board. So, you know, we've had this discussion with Joe and his financing partners over the last couple of months, you know, in trying to get to this point.
All right, trustee Thorntonson?
So, I don't, I know we're throwing out the brick front on the, in the cost of that, but I also heard you say brick corners, sounds like you still have a brick layer involved.
We have, there is some brick work involved, I can't, you know, I, the general contractor has all the subcontractors, some contractors put in place, and the bids have gone out to be able to provide, to be able to do the work. I can't, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in the general contractor's mouth that we could, what we can or can't do.
I just thought, I mean, there are some probably less costly alternatives to a full brick front, if you did brick corners or the shutters.
So should we take a vote?
Yeah, trustee, I just, just pitch something, I really, the project is something we need in town, I think... Yeah, trustee, can I just, just pitch something in? I really, the project is something we need in town. I think, by the way you've answered the questions, you've shown your integrity, and I trust staff has worked hard with you to accomplish some of the things that we're kind of doing on the fly. And I know that the, I just would want to respect staff and how they've worked with you, and also respect you in terms of bringing a project into town. So, for us to say no because there aren't brick, bricks we don't like on the front, I can't bring myself to do that. If you had an easier project that you didn't have to go through all these people to get changes, I'd say, go back and make some changes, but it doesn't seem like that's possible. And that's reasonable to me based on you working with the, the state. So, I think it's a mistake, as far as the board's concerned, if we vote no. I think we need to vote yes, and we need to have this type of facility in town, and if it's not just a perfect facility in town, I'm certainly willing to live with that. And I appreciate, you know, how you've tried to produce a facility that is, fits into our town, and I'd hope that we'd be able to approve it tonight.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion from trustee Hood.
And I'll second it.
Second from trustee Ballmas.
I wouldn't want any changes to the quality of the inside for lack of shutters on the outside or brick. So, second.
All right, I have a motion by trustee Hood, a second by trustee Ballmas. Any more discussion? Trustee Wilson?
Yes, I, and I understand what you're coming from, trustee Hood, but in the big picture, I think the fact that we have no property tax levied by the village is because we have such great places that are, you know, that surround this facility. So, I don't think that you can make the, the parallel between, if you're voting against us, you're voting against them. That's why I disagree with that.
Everybody's going to vote their conscience. Roll call, please, Andy.
Garner?
Nay.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballmas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Ross?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, it's 4-2?
Motion carries at 4-2. All right, I know you'll give anything you can on the outside as, as it goes along, but I know it's been a very difficult two years with IDA and, and all that other stuff.
I appreciate that.
We are, we are very pleased that this facility will be available in town for those that need this type of housing that live in the area, so.
And your honor, I've made a commitment, and if there are funds to be reinvested, they will be reinvested.
All right, we believe you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, item number three, approval of ordinance 201644, amending section 2-311 of the Gurnee Municipal Code, Chapter 2, entitled Schedule of Fines and Late Penalties.
Sure. So, our part-time code enforcement officer started a couple of weeks ago and has been out there going great guns of blazing. One of the things we discussed with that new position out there was some of the fines we have for things such as long grass, vegetation over the sidewalks, et cetera. Our approach, obviously, is to try to work with the property owner at first to gain compliance, but if that doesn't happen and we don't see any progress, then we have an ability to start levying fines. When we started the administrative adjudication hearing process, we went through and, and set a bunch of fines. A lot of those were set at 100 for the minimum and 200 for the minimum after 35 days was gone by and, and the fine, or the issue was still outstanding. We thought a hundred-dollar fine for long grass was a little excessive, so we went through and revised those. Now, these are minimum fines. Code enforcement officer has discretion if he wants to levy something beyond the minimum fine. So, we have a handful here that staff has recommended to take from 100 to 25 for the minimum fine to start out, if the code enforcement officer so determines, and then have in the maximum after 35 days be set at 50 for the majority of them. Again, that's at the code enforcement officer's discretion.
And just for the record, contrary to what people have complained about in the last week, none of our, none of our ordinance violations start at $2, $750 a day. That absolutely is at the end of the due process.
That's got to go through the administrative hearing officer.
Okay. I, I had a question from one of the trustees.
Motion to approve?
Say it again.
All right, motion by trustee Wilson, second by trustee Garner. Discussion? All right, roll call, please, Andy.
Garner?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballmas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, item number four, approval of ordinance 201645, ascertain the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works of this public body. We've been doing this for hundreds of years, and it's usually routine, but we have some new trustees, so we thought maybe giving a little bit of history to the prevailing rate of wages would be helpful this year, so it was taken off the consent agenda, added separately.
Yeah, Brian's, because Brian's got a short PowerPoint presentation with some background information on prevailing wage. We're subject to it as a public body in the state of Illinois, same as all the other public bodies, so it's something we do every June, but Brian will run through this quick, and then if there's any questions, we can answer those.
All right, thank you, Pat. I'm just going over a little bit what it is. The prevailing wage is, is state statute that governs wages paid to contractors and subcontractors for public works projects within the boundaries of a public body. So, really, there's three elements in there that I just want to talk a little bit more about. The wages paid and how we determine that, what public works projects are, and then what defines a public body essentially. Looking at the projects, the Act defines public works projects as any fixed works, construction, or demolition paid for with public funds. And the definition in the Act of public funds is very broad. It includes the obvious taxes and things like that, but also bonds, grants, loans, and then more of a catch-all, any state program, anything funded with, through a state program. So, all, pretty much an all-encompassing there for anything from state funding. Public body is defined in the Act as essentially any institution supported by a public funds. Again, I think this was, it's intentionally brought to capture a wide range of entities, but it does specifically state cities, towns, and villages, so the village is clearly subject to the Act. Prevailing wages in the Act are determined by the Illinois Department of Labor. They vary based on location, so from county to county and classification of work. Rates are based on those paid to public workers, workers on similar projects, and include any benefits, fringe benefits, and paid time off. So, all that cost is wrapped up into the prevailing wage as determined by the Department of Labor, Illinois Department of Labor. For the villages' part in the Act, we are required to ascertain the rates and annually pass an ordinance identifying those rates. There's also some public information, public display of the rates and things like that, provisions in the Act. We are also required to ensure that projects and bids are in compliance with the Act. We maintain certified payrolls on these projects and some other record-keeping. Scott's very familiar with all these, these provisions here. There are penalties in the Act for non-compliance. Most of them fall on the contractor's side. However, there is a statement in there that provides for a Class A misdemeanor for any public official willfully violating or failing to comply, as the words used in the Act. So, I don't think it's very common. In fact, some of the research I did, it's not. But, again, there is, it does provide for that. I think probably, from a legal standpoint, legal action could be brought against the village if, if we don't pass anything, and the contractor doesn't abide by the law, could drag us in. There could be some costs associated with that, but I think that's probably the bigger exposure than a Class A misdemeanor.
And we do prefer, prefer to be in a defensible position.
And the Act is very clear that if, you know, if any village fails to pass the ordinance or ascertain the wages and pass the ordinance, the Department of Labor is going to enforce it anyway. So, it's going to be required whether we, whether we pass it or not. That's all I had from a presentation standpoint. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions? Trustee Wilson?
Pretty much the Illinois General Assembly is telling us how to vote, correct?
We're required by the Act to, to pass this ordinance annually as certaining the prevailing wages, but-
Not all of those wages would go directly to the worker, correct?
I do not know that answer.
Are any of those prevailing wages paid to the union?
I don't know that answer either.
Yes. Um, yeah, they, they're, they're forced to then pay, you know, a union due, that particular worker. I think coincidentally, you can see that prevailing wage can have a negative impact on the aesthetics and the disabled, as, as was offered up earlier today in our own town. Yes, this has to be, this has to be passed, but I'm not sure the Illinois General Assembly should be telling any municipality how they need to vote or how to spend their money. Thank you, Mayor.
This goes back to the 1934 Bacon Act, right? This is like, goes way back. So, it's not like today's legislation came down and said, we're going to make you all follow prevailing wage. I mean, this has-
Yeah, in 1862, Kansas was the first prevailing wage state, and there's actually 18 states that do not have a prevailing wage.
All right, well, but you're making it sound like just right now, we're being forced to do something that we don't want to do, which this has been for a really long time. So, I just want the, I mean, you're right, probably, on the 1862 thing, but this is not something new to this body, governing body this year. This has been, we've been doing this for a very long time. But it would take federal and state legislation for us not to have to use prevailing wage.
It, it would take state, you're right, and-
And federal, because there's some federal Department of Labor implications here. So, we really don't have a choice. Unless we want a lawsuit.
There hasn't been one delivered yet.
Well, we've never not passed it. I don't know of anybody that hasn't passed it. It's just kind of what you do. All right, other questions on prevailing wage? I know we, we always just do it each year.
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Wait, wait, before we make a-
Trustee Garner?
I would just like to state that just because we do it, doesn't make it right, and at some point, perhaps, we should be, you know, at least looking at the issue, re, relooking at the issue. As you can see, what it just did to this, this, this project that came before us, it's going to, it's going to affect how our community looks. And, and I'm not saying it's not a good thing to have prevailing wage. I'm, I'm just saying that we're being forced to, we don't have a choice. And, and just because we do it, to your point, and we've been doing it for all these years, doesn't make it right. So, that's all, that's all I want to say.
I know, but I don't want to be the guinea pig that doesn't pass it tonight, and we're the first lawsuit challenging it. So, again, as, it's a, if federal legislation passes, state legislation passes on the prevailing wage, then we will go along with that. But I don't want to be the guinea pig to encourage a lawsuit to take us on. It's just, I mean, it's really, that's, as a governing board, that's really what our choice is. This is legislation that we're required by law to follow. If we don't, it's a lawsuit. This is an easy lawsuit to avoid. Do I have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion by trustee Ballmas?
Second.
Second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please. Andy?
Garner?
Nay.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballmas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Wilson?
Abstain.
Ross?
Aye.
Four aye, one no, one abstain.
Motion carries. All right, item number five, we're pulling, you've only really had five days to review it. We think more time is kind of needed, so we're going to bring it back at the July 11th meeting and give you a little bit more time to review. There was a lot of changes in there, and ask any questions of Christine, our HR director. So, item number five is pulled and moved to most likely the July 11th agenda. All right, item number six, approval of resolution 2016-
05.
05, agreeing to adopt the multi-jurisdictional Mill Creek Watershed and Flood Mitigation Plan.
Sure. I had a memo from our village engineer, Scott Durbicki. Lake County SMC has finished up this watershed plan for Mill Creek and is asking local communities to adopt the plan. When you look at Gurnee, the area west of Hunt Club Road falls within the boundaries of this watershed. The plan, it's really just a guiding document that identifies actions that can be taken to improve water quality and reduce flooding risks. So, nothing, nothing too earth-shaking from that regard. Scott has been involved in the process, has reviewed the plan. He's comfortable with all the information in there, so it's now ready for consideration by the board at this point.
And this was guided under Stormwater Management. I sit on their board, so I can tell you, this is a really good plan and one that was needed for one of the sub-sheds to the watershed. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by, I think trustee Ross was getting out of her mouth, so I'm going to give her the motion. The second to trustee Ballmas.
Fine, I can be second for a change.
All right. It's not a contest, it's not a competition. All right, roll call, please, Andy.
Garner?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballmas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye, I'm just kidding.
Ross?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Do we have any public comment? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by trustee Ballmas?
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.